Okay, let's call it. Call a Shakopee City Council meeting to order for April 2nd, 2024. If you please take the roll.
To member Delaney. Council member Whiting. Council member. Here. And council member Laura.
Here.
Here Lehman.
Two, if you want to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda, any changes to the agenda?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Changes for council, Mr. Whiting?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Your second?
I'll second that.
Motion by councillor Whiting, second by councillor Contreras, any discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number four, consent business, any changes from staff, council?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Council? I'd like to take, uh, which one is it? A3, I believe it is? 4A3? All right, any other changes, Mr. Lara?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Is your second? Motion by Mr. Lara, second by Mr. Delaney. Discussion on the motion?
Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds, please read the consent agenda, thank you.
Agenda items for April 2nd of 2024. 4A1 are the city council minutes, 4A2 is the Shakopee Fire Department Relief Association bylaw amendments, 4A4 is the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Quarterly Grant Application, 4A5 is the Minnesota Department of Human Services, Services Live Well at Home Program Grant Application, 4A6 is the Minnesota Department of Public Safety's Pathways to Policing Program Grant Award, 4A7 is the 2023 Year End General Fund Transfers and Assignments of the Fund Balance, 4A8 is approves a THC license for Shaheen, Shaheen Property Management LLC, doing business as Shakopee Outlet Plus. 4B1 is a donation from the Shakopee Eagles, 4B2 is the 2023 Fire Department Year in Review, 4C1 is the approval of the 2024 Concession Agreements, 4C2 is the Shakopee Youth Football Scoreboard Proposal, 4C3 accepts a monetary donations from the Shakopee Soccer Association, 4D1 is a preliminary plat of Countryside Third Edition, 4D2 is the final plat of Highview Park Second Edition, 4D3 is the Underground Electrical Service Agreement with Shakopee Public Utilities for Lyons Park. 4D4 is a resolution setting a public hearing for a proposed vacation of drainage and utility easement at 2133 Pike Lake Road. 4E1 are equipment purchases and 4E2 is the 2024 Trail Sea Coating, Seal Coating Project.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Takes us to number five. Recognition of interested citizens by the city council for an item that is not on our agenda. So here tonight for an item that is not on our agenda, that now would be the time to step forward. You here for an item not on the agenda?
I think you guys are good to go.
Okay.
If you want to stay, you can stay.
Seeing none, we'll move on to item number.
Is he good? I think he's good. You're welcome.
Have a nice night. Item numbers.
Look forward to your projects.
Thank you.
Item number six, business removed from the agenda, from the consent agenda. I took off one item and it's 4A3. I wanted to ask if we could hold off on this until after our workshop discussion to get a better flavor of policy that we might adopt or what direction, more specifics of where we might be going. I kind of look at where we're going as the priority being fire response and emergency medical response. Different than EMT. I don't know that I want to limit ourselves to not having somebody that wants to be a first responder, firefighter, because they don't have a desire to be farther up in EMT or paramedic or something like that. So I wanted to ask council's consideration to hold off until we have that policy discussion on the work session. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We actually need to establish the part-time positions because the Relief Association is on the process of being dissolved. We've actually had the requirement for EMT since 2013 in the city of Shakopee. So we're not changing anything other than we're moving things forward and making them part-time as opposed to paid-on-call.
Okay. Mr. Whiting?
We just got a report showing some major laxes in some of our fire services and not, not of the intent of the, the staff by any means, just we had some lax. Management, other issues, this was a recommendation, this was one of the first things out of, out of our consultant's mouth was, he thought this was illegal, having the fires, the, the part-time action through the Relief Association, so we had to take care of that. So this is part of, was step one this year, right away. In, in what I remember from the report, am I wrong, Mr. Reynolds? This was low-hanging fruit, get it done, right? Chief, can you, anybody chime in on that if they want? But to me, this is something we got to get done. We'll have a lot to talk about moving forward, but this is something we need to get done. Chief, do you want to chime in on that?
And it's kind of a well-known fact that you can't have folks that are part-time and full-time and we've been allowing that to happen for some time, so it's a violation of federal law, FLSA. So that's one of the low-hanging fruit that we, it's pretty easy for us to clean up. We're not changing a lot. Mr. Reynolds is right, we've required EMT of all of our staff since 2013. There's only three firefighters that aren't EMT and they don't want to be EMT and they don't plan to stay on the department, they're, they're planning to leave the department. I don't know of any other metro department that doesn't require EMT. EMT is really common and as, as was stated in the report, that's one of the major areas of concern is medical responses. So we're not changing anything, we're just eliminating the Relief Association. And actually, Mr. Reynolds pointed out something that was very important to note. There's two ways to dissolve a Relief Association, the city can start it, that's called an involuntary or a voluntary, where the Relief Association votes and the Relief Association Board did vote to voluntarily dissolve, so they're moving forward.
I read that was unanimously, I thought, too, right?
Correct, and staff is ready for this, this isn't a major change within the organization, they're, they're excited to keep moving forward. I think everybody could, would be even happier if we could just pick up and move, you know, a few months out and be through all the changes that are ahead of us. But this is one of the major steps in step one to get, get us going in the right direction.
Mr. Lara?
I have a question, are the firefighters that are leaving, are, are they leaving because of the EMT requirement? Are they leaving on their own accord or?
You know, it's hard to say, I mean, so it's been known for a long time in Shakopee Fire Department that, you know, from 2013 on, all the new firefighters coming onboard had to be EMT. Some were grandfathered in that weren't EMTs. But it's been well-known, long before I came here, that at some point in time you, you have to be an EMT, otherwise it's, you're not going to be able to stay. I would say a lot of, or the, out of the three, I would say most of them aren't really excited about the changes that are taking place, so we're probably leaving anyways. We just offered a free EMT class that a couple people are taking currently from our department that didn't have their EMT and those three chose not to, to take it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
I have two questions. Does number two hinder the, I guess, resolution to dissolve the Fire Department Relief Association? If that's not approved, does that, or if this, if that's pulled off as far as the approved job descriptions? Their job descriptions have become effective May 6th. And I think our fire department meeting huddle is April 26th?
23rd?
23rd.
April, April 23rd, correct.
So if moving this, after that discussion happens, is that going to impact the resolution? Or dissolution of the?
So our, our understanding from working with State Auditor's Office and the Office of Pensions from the state of Minnesota, there has to be a 30-day notice, there has to be 30 days of time from the time that the Relief Association votes to dissolve. This, coming here tonight is, is, it's, it's not even a necessary step because the Relief Association has voted to dissolve, they are dissolving, they're notifying the State Auditor's Office. It's more of us accepting it as, you know, kind of a good faith effort, I would say, more than anything. So that's moving forward, but we have to have that 30-day window of time before we can start a new pension program. So we're giving notice that we're stopping the Relief Association, that's going to end and now we're going to start the new pair-up program, you know, within that, just beyond that 30 days. So it is kind of timely that it happens tonight and that's why we, we moved it forward for tonight.
So do we know how many of our police officers are EMTs?
I don't think there's many that are EMTs, it's, it's, so Minnesota, the, the post board governs police officer licenses, there are no requirements to be EMR or EMT. Shakopee is, is, is a different, a good example of where the chiefs always require EMRs. There might be a handful of EMTs, I believe there are, because he's talked to us about doing training at our site. We do all of our EMT training onsite, it's free training through Alina, so it doesn't cost the city anything. And again, it's been a requirement in our job description since 2013. So as far as worried about, you know, it's going to increase the, the cost of an hourly rate for the firefighters, it's been in there for over 10 years.
It's not the hourly rate that, I, I look at it more like the Public Works or Police Department where there's certificates that you get which are a performance enhancement, where there's a bonus for that, whether it's ASE for the mechanics across the street or second language for cops and some of these other things. And I was looking at this the same way, yeah, we want to encourage them to do that, but they should also be compensated for that. And for first responders, as the report says, most of, most of the time, the first EMR is a police officer. And if, if emergency response, emergency medical response, responder, is acceptable for police to be able to do that service, which they have for a long time, there's no reason why our first response couldn't be the same with the caveat that we have this other area of potential improvement with benefit into the EMC, EMT side.
But, Mr. Mayor, there is already, out of the 46 people, 43 are EMTs. So that, that ship's already sailed, so to speak. And, and there is a big difference between EMR and EMT and the, the study pointed out, and you'll talk more about it at your workshop, but because of the delays that we're seeing in our provider, the, the Alina ambulance isn't at the hospital. You know, so the, the perception that the Alina ambulance is coming from the hospital is not correct. We do have a base, base form at station two, they're very rarely there because there's a shortage of ambulances because of the staffing. And that's why it's important to have EMTs responding because you have variances, you can do more than EMRs, you can start life support functions with equipment that we can carry that police officers can't carry. So it's all about that, the level of care that we're providing for our citizens and our visitors. It's a lot higher than, than EMR.
This, uh, this, this, this change is going to take a partnership with Alina.
We have a great partnership with Alina, we meet with Alina once a month.
And I've asked that they're, they're sit in on our workshop because I'm concerned that if we require EMT, we are taking away from their pool also, so we're not helping ourselves. Or we might lose people to go into that service, so I.
But, but, Mr. Mayor, we've had this since 2013.
Right, we are, we are adopting job descriptions is what the issue is for me.
But the job description is essentially the same roles that they currently do.
It's a different pension, that's the only change.
That's the only thing, is it's a pension as opposed to the Relief Association.
In Alina, when we meet with them on a monthly basis, they're excited that we are EMTs and we are getting variances, they want us to be EMTs. It's very unusual to have a fire department not be EMTs.
Exactly.
It's, it, it would be highly unusual to have EMRs in the fire service. I, I don't know of a metro department that has EMRs.
Mr. Whiting?
I'm going to go back and say, we just had a study done and there's no way that I want to start backsliding right away here and dumbing down what we're moving toward. We have had the EMT requirement, now you are a firefighter while you're fighting fires and all of a sudden, things can change really quickly and all of a sudden, you need, might have to switch gears and be a, a EMT for your other firefighter. That medical technician and a lot of the calls are medical technician, are medicals. That medical technician level is not that extensive a class, how many hours is it? 40 maybe?
It's a little bit more than that, we're in the midst of doing it right now. Again, I just literally left, Alina's doing the training at our station tonight. I mean, they're there tonight, our class is going on right now, I think it's 72 hours, but don't quote me on that.
I consider it a minimum certification, I have no problem with this job description and with that, I would move to authorize or approve the requested dissolution of the Shakopee Fire Relief Association and establish the part-time firefighter positions as, as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion by councillor Whiting, seconded by councillor Contreras, any discussion? Discussion? Mr. Delaney?
Just looking for a point of clarification, so since 2013, when we actually published job descriptions to hire in for our, for our personnel, this has been on as part of the requirements. They pull that up online or newspaper, it says you must have EMT to be hired.
That's correct.
And in 13, it was paid-on-call, correct?
In 13, we hired our first full-time firefighters and that, from that point on, any full-time positions was advertised as requiring EMT. Now, all of our paid-on-call firefighters come from the community, we provide all the initial training. So we aren't hiring, you know, paid-on-call firefighters with training, that's pretty common, that we do the training down at scale. When we get done with the firefighter training at scale, which includes hazmat and all the different functions of being a firefighter, then we do the EMT class with Alina at our fire station and it's been a partnership with Alina since.
That was full-time positions since 2013 that you just said. These are part-time positions, so any part-time position is going to need to be EMT, even if they just want to be a first, first EMR responder or firefighter.
We've not allowed any first responders to be on the department as new, as new staff since 2013.
I didn't think you even get on the truck.
Except for the ones that are leaving because they don't want to be EMTs.
They were grandfathered in, they were hired before 2013.
Okay. Mr. Delaney?
One more point of clarification, does this impact our recruiting at all? Or is it?
It does not, it's, it's extremely, it's extremely common for recruits, applicants to be EMTs.
And last, I will just point out that the study was, went from the current situation to the Lamborghini. We are not by law required to adopt the full Lamborghini. We can twist and mold this to what best serves our community and our partners with Alina.
And that's exactly what we're going to talk about on the 23rd, but this is a fundamental building block that changes nothing other than our Relief Association is going away and therefore, these individuals will be hired as part-time individuals as opposed to being paid-on-call individuals, that's the change.
Mr.? I just want to be sure what motion is on the floor, is it just number one and the, or is it all three?
Oh, I, I can clarify that it is all three positions, approved resolution 2024 Tag 044, approve the job descriptions and approve resolution 2024 Tag 042.
Is that?
Not three, I'll go.
Okay.
And if I may, it's not a Lamborghini. It's ultimately a professional fire department and the key is what it looks like. But, you know, ultimately, the report said that we could transition to a full-time department at some point. I don't see that as happening, frankly. I think that we're going to have a partnership of both full-time and part-time. And in order to make that model work, we have to have the part-time employees.
Any other discussion? Mr. Contreras?
I just wanted to add on one of those comments, we are already short-staffed from our, you know, the ambulance, so when they arrive, our fire department arrives. For them to have another tool in their toolbox to know in any situation, because sometimes, you know, we see something and we'll call it in and we don't know because we're just a bystander, but when they get there and they're actually on the floor, on the ground, to be an EMT and to have those skills, me, you're just making your fire department stronger, better. So to me, I mean, it's, that's hopefully not one of us need them and if, you know, God willing, right, that we're all good, but, you know, that when they show up, they're there to help us and, and save our lives if that's needed, so.
I, I would encourage you to, Mayor and council, to at any point in time, do a ride-along with our, our duty crew. Being out of the service for two years and, and doing a ride-along with our duty crew, it's just amazing the tools that they have and their skill sets they have. So I would encourage you to, to ride along and, and watch what they do at a medical call. It's just amazing. You know, regardless of what newspaper articles say, we have a great fire department. I wish you could sit in on some of the interviews that we sat in on screening some of the applicants because many of the applicants don't think we're building a Lamborghini. As a matter of fact, they're upset with me because they don't think I'm doing my job of trying to sell that we need much more than what we're doing. We're, we're building a basic fire department. And, and it always will be a combination department in my mind with, with full-time and part-time staff.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's see where. Item number seven. Recess for Economic Development Authority Meeting, is there a motion? Mr. Lara?
I'll make a motion to, uh, recess for the Economic Development Authority.
Lara, seconded by Mr. Delaney, any discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, we're in recess. Madam President.
Thank you. I call to order the Shakopee Economic Development Authority Meeting for April 2nd, 2024. First on our list here is the roll call, staff, if you could please make note of our role, who's in attendance? Second, we have the approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
And we have a second, so Mr. Whiting and Mr. Lehman. Any questions, discussion, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number three, consent business, and on that business, we have our EDA minutes, any questions on those? Any, anything? Yes, sir.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Delaney, thank you so much, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number three, our general business. Mr. Kurski, good evening, here to present for us?
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Board Members. So tonight, we thought we would just bring you an update, included in your package was the report from our consultant on where we've been and where we're going. So this will be the first time you officially see, this is the Foundry Minnesota, fueling innovation, forging growth. This is the name, the entrepreneur group, not only picked, but also picked this logo, which was done by Deb Noble on the communications staff, our award-winning graphic designer. When we started this project two and a half years ago, I think we had three or four companies, we're up to 29 right now. I'll just go through a few of them, give you kind of a taste of the companies we're dealing with today. This is Audit IT Labs, IT Audit Labs. Eric Brown is the person that comes to this group, he's the managing partner. They're one of the top IT security companies in the Twin Cities. Wolf's Two, Atso Cycles, Dan Dittmer, who's in this picture here, he's one of the three partners. He is the Chair of the Advisory Group for Foundry MN, Shakopee resident. Started here at Seagate, he and his two other partners slowly worked their way out of Seagate. They now have a company founded in 2013, they have about 70 employees today and they sell their product worldwide. Written Hugs Designs, Kristy Kamik, she's also on the Board of Advisors. She lives in Shakopee with her husband and three children over by the hospital. She started a company, I think it's interesting, this is her quote, "These aren't any cards I've seen that are both true to the reality of grief and loss we face while acknowledging how holidays make those losses that much harder." Her cards are now carried in 600 stores nationwide. They just got picked up by one of the local grocers beyond that. So again, a small Shakopee company. We had an interesting meeting with Representative Tapke and she made the point that when being entrepreneurs, a lonely business and having this group and being able to talk about ideas and challenges faced has really been critical to success for a business. Here's a picture of her and her husband at TAP last year where they had a booth selling their cards. This is one of our newer members, Accelerated Care Solutions, they were just picked as one of the rising stars in Minnesota. They partner with senior communities through COVID, they found that many of the nurses in senior living communities were just burned out and left because what would happen is they'd be working during the day, they'd get home and then they would call and say, so-and-so's in crisis, what should we do? And so they were working basically 15, 20 hours a day and so the people started leaving and they're required to have nursing staff around the clock. Mike and his wife, Mike is, excuse me, the co-founder and chief executive officer, but you can see, he ran a $1.5 billion holding company before he started this company. He also worked in the Alina Health System and United Healthcare, so he's been around for a while. They came up with a concept of having nurses working remotely that could access technology, that could tap into the systems at these homes and they found nurses, both locally and around the country, that were willing to work that kind of overnight and weekend shift and were on-call to answer those. And they started out giving nursing facilities kind of a free 30-day trial and after 30 days, they said, well, do you want to come onboard? And the day staff said, if you don't keep this company onboard, we're quitting because we now have our life back, the patient care is much better and this is an incredible service. So they started out with a handful of companies, I think, a cer, handful of customers are now at about 30 some odd and he's out recruiting right now for more staff. So very rapid success. This is a, two ladies just joined a couple of months ago, Mom's Sent Solutions. They're a woman-owned company, started in 2021 by Dr. Ashley Monahan. It's about breast pumping, they just won $30,000 from Hy-Vee as a new healthcare startup and they also have an NIH grant that they're doing right now for testing. So a pretty bleeding-edge company in a space that basically the, most of the companies in the country have ignored and they decided they were going to try and come up with a solution. Probably know these folks still head outdoors, came up with the idea that two people can assemble and move their safes without any special equipment and when it's time to move, you simply take it apart and take it with you. Deserve a safe that's ready for your next adventure, wherever that takes you. So formed in 2016, they're now headquartered in Shakopee, they both live in Shakopee, Corey Meyer, the co-founders, a Shakopee resident on the Board of Advisors. They're down by Manheim Auctions. They now have these large safes, they're working with a number of police departments on safes for their guns when the officers go in and have to lock up their guns. They're working with a number of school systems for school resource officers, many of whom keep their high-powered weapons in their car. When there's a crisis, they have to go to their car to get their gun. They've developed special safes that are in the school that only the police officers have access to, so that if there's a crisis, they can open them up and get access to their weapons right away. So I think it's going to be a great company, they partnered with the Shakopee School System on some training on some of their machinery. I think they're two great engineers who've got a lot of energy and are great for our community. So TAP 2023, just some pictures, some of you attended this. I think it was a pretty successful event, we switched up some things, we started a new music showcase in cooperation with Badger Hill and one of Prince's producers, who was at that time a partner in Badger Hill and they were able to bring some new music singer and songwriter competition. And TAP 2024, we have September 6th this year at The Landing and Angie Craig is tentatively accepted to be the keynote speaker again. to be the keynote speaker again this year. And I'm also working with Senator Klobuchar and Senator Smith's staff to get them there. They think, if you remember, the first year we had about 60 people on the bridge. Last year, we had 102 people. And people have been calling me, asking me when it is this year. They were really, thanks to support from the Shakopee Public Utilities, were I think really excited about this event. Our legislators and representatives got to meet a lot of these entrepreneurs in the community. And I think we're really excited about what's happening here in Shakopee. The benefit, excuse me, to this is that companies that are looking to move here, larger companies, like this kind of activity in the community because they know there are young and old people that are entrepreneurial thinking about what can happen and they want to tap into that. We have a couple of companies right now looking at Shakopee because of what we're doing with this program that hopefully will fill some of the buildings that you see along That was a great quote. I got this today. The head of one of the breweries said they do 40 of these events a year. Shakopee is our favorite. Right now, we already have 24 breweries have already committed from throughout Minnesota. And if you look at that Shakopee Spring Lake, New Ulm, Roseville, St. Paul, Two Harbors, Eden Prairie, Minneapolis, Minnetoka, Burnsville, Rochester, Blue Earth, Bloomington, St. Peter, Chaska, Robbinsdale, and Duluth. So that's, this has become kind of the premier event for people that are real brewery connoisseurs and also the breweries enjoy it because it's not a big drunk fest or anything. It's a sampling event where they get to try new beers. The beer that won last year, the guys just literally came up with the idea, rolled it out and they actually ran out of it. It was so popular and they won hands down above everyone else. The music stage is committed for this year and E Grandstand, the company that provides those tasting glasses, has actually agreed this year, they like this event so much, they agreed to donate all of the glasses. So that's a pretty big step. All ties back into the hub. I like to show this because I think it really puts things in perspective. Minnesota's currently losing more college students than it attracts, which is a troubling trend. Minnesota also has the nation's second lowest jobless rate. Is that good? Not necessarily. And Minnesota celebrates and confronts a baffling low unemployment rate. So we have to start training people here and we we have to keep people here. We have lots of jobs open and we're going to have companies that are going to start leaving to go to areas where they can actually find more people. Here's what the hub looks like today. So that Entrepreneur Network, Foundry Minnesota, we would have entrepreneurs and residents. We've been working with, excuse me, some of the groups that are out of Minneapolis, like the Twin Cities Ignition, which is run by one of the banks downtown. We met with their founder. They would like to have some of their entrepreneurs come our way because they're kind of software focused and they see that we're not that software focused. We're more hard tech focused. And that's really something Minnesota historically has really been one of our strengths and we've kind of lost that strength over the years. We've gotten a commitment to work with our SBDC, have a maker space, coworking space. The Shakopee Chamber would move all their job training to this facility. We have Angel Investor Group. We've worked with Groove Capital. We were able to land a major investment with them from a local group. The CDA Center for Entrepreneurship would move there. We would have advanced manufacturing training. And then luckily, our new dean of the Business College at Minnesota State University is a Shakopee resident, moved into a D.R. Horton House, moved here from California. He ran three of these facilities in California and is just so excited to be able to have a major presence here in the Twin Cities. And again, this is not necessarily a Shakopee project. It's supported by the region, Shakopee Public Schools, the CDA, Chanhasan, Exel Energy, Shakopee, Minnetoka, and Sioux, the Chamber of Commerce, Eden Prairie, Shakopee Public Utilities, Emerson, Carver County, St. Francis Hospital, New Prague. Those are just some of our partners. Refresh you about how this is really going to be an unusual building. So we currently have a congressional appropriation of 1.5 million from '22, '23. We have a million dollars from '23, '24 that will be presented in April to us. We have another million dollars in for '24, '25. I did chat with Representative Tapke today. He has a request in for $4 million of the '24, '25 budget. Working with Generator, who was on that chart, they are probably the nation's leading entrepreneur, kind of private sector investor. They are working with on some, with us on some other potential funding opportunities for a total project construction budget of about $12 million. So our goal would be to, we have to start spending this federal money to use some of the first 1.5 million to work with all of our partners to come up with a real building plan and a real hard construction cost and work with what programming would go in there and get that wrapped up so that we can keep the funding tranches moving.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. I'd love to see that because that shows that there's some people who have some faith in Shakopee. 12 million bucks coming this way. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, our congressional representatives have been very generous with both their time and their efforts to try and get this project to move along.
Right. Yep. Thank you, sir. Yes, Mr. Lehman.
Thank you, Madam President. Two questions. The first is the advisory board. At what point do we have them start looking at how to create that partnership with the trades?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Partnership with the trades. Now, we're probably not going to be able to teach people in this building the trades, but we need to make the connection of the individuals that consider going that route to the places that can give them that opportunity, whether it's Dakota County, Hennepin County, whoever.
Yep. So we've already had that discussion. So Minnesota State University has a partnership agreement with Hennepin County. Trying to think of Dakota, I can't pronounce, DCTC.
Dakota County.
And the one in Bloomington. So they already have those partnerships and they're running sort of facilities there in partnership with them. This would be their main facility to have those partnerships. So it's welding machinery, couple of the other high tech CNC. So we've had the discussion because, so for instance, Wolf's Tooth Cycles and Wolf's Tooth, Wolf's Tooth Parts and Atso Cycles have a huge demand for CNC operators, machine operators. They will become one of the early clients. Same with Steelhead Outdoors. All of their stuff is machined in their shop. And so they've been taking high school students kind of at that junior scenery level to kind of say, look, this isn't, this is a good gig, guys. You know, we're, we're engineers. You can become an engineer or you can make probably the same amount of money being, you know, machine operator. So they've had actually pretty good success and had interns over the summer. So I think, you know, as we get going on this, we'll work with all those partners to figure out what equipment really needs to be in the building. One of the pieces that we haven't talked about is we have some of the best 3D printing in the world in Minnesota. And that's now become a new piece of technology. It's been using cars, aircraft, medical devices that that's another area of training that really needs to happen because it's becoming a pretty prevalent way to manufacture things.
Madam President, if they're going to revamp the electrical grid in this country, they're going to need some electricians to do it.
Yep.
Okay. Second question, Madam President, was the, so part of this is entrepreneurs. And how do we reach out to the potential entrepreneur through this program? I mean, you've got a board, you've got the founders, but is it people that are already established in doing this?
I have to, I think you know.
I get that part, but are we not trying to find people that want to invent something or make something or whatever?
So Madam President and boards, so the way, if you kind of think at different levels. So the CDA Center for Entrepreneurship kind of along with the SBDC have kind of the entry point for people that, I have an idea, is it a good idea? Can you do a business plan? Does it work? Is it a concept? Our group has some of those people. I mean, Kristy that has written Hugs Design, you know, she's learning as she goes. The Mom Sense, I mean, there's a whole article that I didn't show you that they know nothing about starting a business, but they knew there was a problem. They've gotten grants. They got an NIH grant because she's a doctor and she knows there's a problem, but she know how to solve the problem. We have some of those people and it's interesting to see guys like the Steelhead Outdoor guys who are metallurgical engineers, talking about bras and boats and other things that you never would think, but they are helping these people, you know, and Dan Dittmer's been in business 11 years now. And so one of our new entrepreneurs said, geez, I got this, all these clients all of a sudden. I got so much business, I know what to do. And he said, well, what's the problem? And he said, well, I ship something to California and then I got to pay to ship it back. And I'm not making any money because when it comes back, it costs me three or four times as much as it costs me to ship it there. There's got to be a better solution. And Dan said, there's a software that we use because we ship all over the world. Why don't you just get the software and you can try it at our place? And if it works, just subscribe to it and you can get your outgoing and back things guaranteed. So it's amazing to see some of the more mature entrepreneurs helping the people that are just starting out.
Very good.
I'm sure.
Go ahead.
Just noting from your presentation, you have a promote successes and it looks like, you know, through the organic discussions in the group and reaching out, but also some advertising and a number of success stories were featured in local media. Looks like MSP Business Journal, Eden Prairie Magazine, also a newsletter. So you're getting the word out, it sounds like.
Excuse me, I think Chair and Board Members, I think the amazing thing is the, like, we didn't go and find the Mom Sense ladies. Another person in the group said, this group's so amazing. You're having issues. You need to come to this group. And so we're attracting people from throughout the Twin Cities that are coming to Shakopee once a month. And they're like, geez, we probably should start meeting more often and can we get a space? And I kind of went, well, that's kind of the long term plan here. So you could actually move here. You know, it's just like Steelhead Outdoors. We went to a presentation, they turned around and said, hey, can we join this group we heard about? And I said, yeah, you guys look like you're pretty far along. They said, it's all looks. We're not really that far along, but we need help. They have grown leaps and bounds because we have some, some people on the, on the group that are on their fourth company. And every time you start a new company, you face a lot of different issues. And so it's amazing to see the, how they feed off each other. It's just incredible.
And I'd like, adding on to that, I see your priorities will continue, will be to focus on advancing the development of the core group and enhancing the founder network. So, I mean, it's, it's going. It's, it's happening. You know, like you say, maybe one person talking to the other one and, you know, inviting them or just by hearing their, you know, their issues. They're like, hey, we'll come over here. So it's, it's, and I also see that you guys want to encompass 35 members by the end of this year. Is that what your, their goal is?
Pardon me, I can't.
To, it looks like you guys want to grow to 35, 35 members or more.
I mean, Chair and Board Members, I think we'll, you know, if it was 100, we'd be happy. I mean, I think, two and a half years ago, when we had four people and we had some incredible people and who's still, the guy that did Skyride, I mean, he's hosting all of these people out at his kind of innovation ranch out in Waconia in June because he's just so excited. I mean, he's a guy in his mid to late 60s who's on his fourth or fifth company. And, you know, if you ever looked in the dictionary under tinkerer and genius, it would be him. And he sits at the meetings sometimes and you just like wonder, but he's very blunt. He said to one of our people who presented, he got like 17 products. Why don't you just focus on the best one and then grow your company instead of trying to do 17 things? And he said, I've been there a lot of times and I'm going to tell you, you're going to end up losing a lot of money and a lot of sleep. And we have another entrepreneur who's, we used to have a slide we show every meeting, what, what's keeping you up at night? And he said, you know, nothing keeps me up at night anymore. Life's, you know, this is not that important. There's other things in life. You have to understand it's a business, but you have to have a life. And that's been really helpful for some of the younger entrepreneurs.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Anyone else have any feedback? Go ahead.
I've had the opportunity, several opportunities, one to sit in on one of these meetings. And like you said, it's a room full of these people that are, come from different segments of businesses and they're just bouncing ideas and feeding off of each other. And it's just this room of advice and growth that are happening. I've had an opportunity to speak to them at that TAP dinner. And I've also had an opportunity to see their products at the next day at, when they're presenting at TAP. They have booths up and so it's just, it's really, I think what we see this going on in the background, we might not see a lot of it out, but I know there's a lot of stuff going on in the back that's really being innovative in terms of this group and where the hub is heading. And it's really going to put Shakopee on the map in terms of this, that hopefully this could be a model that people can see statewide, nationwide and with the hub that we're going to have growth in trades and partnerships with school and in the end, drive jobs. So it's great stuff.
Go ahead, sir.
Madam President, as somebody that started a business, you're right, it's very difficult and just overwhelming in some areas. And I'm envisioning this hub to be what, a hub? I mean, if somebody wanted to start a business or wanted to get into the trades or wanted to do, make a new something, the first place is, is stop at this hub and talk to people that can give you advice, maybe steer you in a direction, whether that might be college, it might be VOTEC, it might be sit down with this group if it's something you want to create yourself. And they can help them through the process of, you know, whether it's a trademark maybe or creating a corporation, an LLC, whatever the case might be, you know, somebody that takes the edge off of that scare that prevents that person from taking that leap of faith because starting a business is a leap of faith. It's a leap of faith. It really is.
Yep.
And it seems like everything works against you.
Right.
You know?
Yep.
No, I mean, I think the gentleman that, I kind of said to this guy, John Saldon, I had lunch with him and I kind of said, so what's your like real job? And he goes, I'm chairman of the board of a bank. And I was like, okay. But he's so into entrepreneurship, he's kind of put that aside and it's like funding and trying to put people together. And he said, I never knew there was so much going on in Shakopee. He said, all I hear from people like Generator and stuff is you got to talk to the people in Shakopee. And he said, you know, we'll be able to get at the hub. He said, you'll get one day a week, you know, a top trademark person or whatever will come and you, you can advertise and say on Friday, so and so will be there, you know, free hours for advice. Because he said, they're looking long term for clients. And he said, you will be amazed the number of people that will come and help.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Mr. Kurski. And we have the potential. We have the funds that are coming in and they believe in us. So I think all we get to do is just support and continue to, to see this grow. Thank you.
Halfway home.
I mean, I think.
Seven million more.
We're almost there.
Eight or nine million.
And we'll stay hopeful for that money, you know, the 4 million.
We have a very valuable partner, as y'all know, with Shakopee Public Utilities because they've been with us from the beginning.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks to your support in negotiating our franchise agreement. And they have been very flexible to try and make things happen. And there's a day go by that I don't either get a text or a call from Greg on either one of the projects that's looking here that wants information about Shakopee or he's talked to somebody in the state about what's going on. So it's a great partnership.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. All righty. So we are, number four. Number five brings us to our EDA bill list. Anybody have any questions on our EDA bill list?
No questions.
Seeing none. Number six, someone, Mr. Delaney.
We adjourn to Tuesday, May 7th, 2024, 7:00 p.m.
Perfect. We have a second on that?
I can second that.
Motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number eight, reconvene. General business, number nine, let's see, 10A, city bill list. Any questions on the bill list?
No questions.
No questions on that.
None. 10B, liaison administration. Which end did we start with last time?
And.
We start.
We did or didn't?
No, we did or we didn't start. So I'll start.
Mr. Delara, you're up.
Uh, my update is I attended the ribbon cutting to the River Valley Health Services that's operating out of the CAP Services Building. It's their second clinic. The first one based out of Chaska. So they're, will be providing services out of Shakopee. And from what I've gathered, it's a very needed service. So it's good, good to be there.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Condras?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I was here for, on the 26th, on the housing workshop that we did that was extra. And on the 28th, I attended the Community Afar, the event that our Muslim community had where they broke their fast at 7:36. And I was very honored to be there. We got the explanation of why they invite the community out. And it's just something that they want to share with everyone. You know, sometimes at the beginning, you know, they maybe didn't feel, I guess all cultures are different. And, you know, sometimes we say, well, you know, we're trying to be respectful. We leave them alone, let them be. But sometimes But sometimes, you know, they want to feel that they're part. So what do they do? They go out and invite us to these special events that they have, you know? Yeah, we all have different religions and ideas, but just the idea that you go and you eat with them, that they want to do that in a meal, and they want to share with you and just talk over, just have community, you know, conversation. That was pretty darn, you know, cool to see. We've done it a couple of years, but every year you learn something new, and I was very grateful to be part of that. So that's my report.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Whiting?
I missed it this year, and I've been there in the past, and I couldn't make it. It's too bad. I enjoy it in the past, so I understand what you're talking about. I didn't have any other liaisons, but I was at the Shakopee Lions Club meeting when one of our very own, Sherry DeVorek, won the Top Dog Award from the Lions Club.
Yay!
Now, the Shakopee Lions are doing things in the park, solid time with their ice golf event and their softball tournaments, and I think we're gonna get another softball tournament, the Big USA Softball, really likes Shakopee, they may be coming back. Not sure if that's a done deal yet, but, but all sorts of things and work that Sherry's done as a liaison to the club. And so thank you for that, and congratulations on being a Shakopee Lions Top Dog.
Thank you, Mr. Whiting. Mr. Delaney?
All right, Shakopee Public Utilities Liaison. Again, we've already talked about our great partnership with our Shakopee Public Utilities. This is just some, highlight some of the things they did the past month. They donated fifty pounds of candy to our egg hunt in candy-grab community, so I think fifteen hundred people or more participated, so thank you. Also, I think one of the things we actually approved tonight was their new service, line is going in, they're actually doing labor and part of the cost of that, which is also another big thank you for the utility. But on the heels of that, we also have our AMI Advanced Metering Infrastructure's coming in. So you'll start getting these notices, I'm actually one of the beginning pigs, it seems, from the first, easy to sign up to get your water meter replaced. I did mine online, but you can also call and make appointments, so please start showing them through your mailbox, just know what they're for.
So the guy doesn't have to walk all the way around the fence and come find a hole and come back and go back.
So that's coming up. Let's see what else. There was a power outage, I think that popped up online, of course, three hundred and forty-four people were impacted. It was over in forty-nine minutes. The great part of that was communication came from our utilities, but also there's a lot of feedback online, but people were appreciative that, you know, it did get resolved fairly quickly, and also the communication piece that came out, that, I mean, they were pretty much putting information up of what's happening. That's part of the, that part of it. 169 Coalition dissipated in a Met Council Transportation Policy Listening Session today. That was actually pretty informative, my first time doing that, pretty informative as part of their TTT Transportation Policy Listening. So that was really, really cool, put the 169 Coalition piece in there. Also, some other coalitions participate, fifty-five coalitions, so it's good to hear their feedback and some of their concerns. And I have a transportation meeting next week with our representative, TACU, TACO Transportation, so that'll be pretty cool to find out more about priorities and goals. As far as miscellaneous, also is that the, is it IFtar? That was sponsored by our Ruggs End Bankroom. Food was great, really informative, learning about our communities, other communities. And there is the upcoming, I think, Election Integrity Meeting sponsored over at Shepherd of the Lakes next week, and I forgot who's sponsoring that, but I think we all got emails on that, so this is coming up. And that's it.
Very good. Thank you. My report is pretty limited. I was out with a back hip injury, so I did contact the, what's her name, Ross, Rossman Downtown? I didn't attend because I was hurting pretty bad, but I did attend today along with Counselor Lara, the ribbon-cutting at the River Valley Health Service Center. A lot of history goes back into the CAP Agency and everything they've been in over the decades and decades and decades, and it's pretty cool to see people with a heart to serve others, so.
Did your mom work there?
She did. She did, and my wife and I did much work for many charities and nonprofits over our years of business. It's always nice to see people helping people. So that's extent of mine. Mr. Reynolds, anything?
No, sir.
All right. Item eleven, other business. Item twelve.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, April sixteenth, 2024, at 7:00 p.m.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Mr. Lara, second by Mr. Delaney. Discussion on the motion. Discussion?
No.
Say aye?
Aye.